Okay, at six o'clock, we'll call the meetings to order. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda for this meeting this evening? Anyone have a motion to approve the adjustments? We have a second on favor high, both same side. Move into our consent items. Board members have any questions on maybe a bill or some down sheet? So Athletic Fund Julie that it was negative, but we've since transferred money, right?
Yeah, so I was waiting for the entries from our college. So I made the entries and then uploaded it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the consent items? If you don't, do I have a motion to approve the consent items? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
On favor high, both same side. Consent items are approved. Move on to your next item, which is correspondence and recommendations.
I just got one letter sent to me and the person asked me if I could read it. And so I told them that I would. Doctor Frenchman. Read it. Okay, to my Bachelor's School Board Administration in Canadian Arch. My wife and I were searching for an acre twenty two years ago. Decided we'd driven far enough from the white room.
Okay.
Over to you. My wife and I were searching for an acre twenty two years ago and decided we'd driven far enough from Des Moines, where both worked as we traveled up S fifty two. Some friends with us said, just one more hill and we'll turn around. Over the next hill, we saw a for sale sign at the end of the driveway of the alcohol home. This isn't a romanticized reflection, it's a hundred percent true. As we became interested in the property, we ventured into town to check out the local, the locals, the banks, grocery store, two gas stations, then certainly the school. We were happy with all of it. And we both came from rural community in southwest Iowa. There was a love of feeling at nearly every turn. As I stopped in Aaron Tire, a person asked me about my day and we struck up a conversation. This person was eager to have new families and move to Baxter. This man later showed up to be Pat Miller, who we found out a few days later was selling the property we were looking into, and it was his folks' place. Story gets even more elegant, but I'll save that to share with folks and people in person sometime. I encourage anyone to ask me about how our paths crossed. I'm not sure whether you call it fate, happenstance, or something more divine, but we found our home here. The sense of community we felt when we looked through the town sealed the deal for us. The same sense of community has drawn many others for good reason. No, we're not free of mistakes. Neither you nor I can make that claim. We do put our best foot forward and despite differences, we love each other and truly wish the best for each other. Even when there's a knee jerk reaction, we allow polar heads to prevail. I've been critical of decisions made by our schools sometimes. I've been right and sometimes I've been wrong. Notwithstanding, I've also walked the back of position. I am taken in and apologize for it. Why? Because it's the right thing to do. Our passions must not negate these things. I worried we'd accidentally come and accidentally gone to look at our staff's liability instead of the access they truly are. In a culture we inhabit, that might not be stretched, but it's certainly not our best work. I witnessed Baxter being a place over two decades that come together when times are rough. When the power is out, we shut generators. When the neighbors' lints are down, we cut them up and call them off. When the people in the community have needs, fellow citizens help in any way they can. We take cues from what is best from one another. We don't squabble over what you want or what I want. Instead, we say what is best for the future. And we're the best when we do that. We don't cut people loose because it appears to be politically expedient. Please, when making decisions, carefully consider the community and remind yourself whom you seek to serve with your actions. We all make mistakes and we can forgive them. Thank you for your work and your dedication. Regards, Michael.
Two weeks ago, I swear, teacher appreciation works. We'd like to recognize teachers for all their faith. Several spent things through that. Okay, our next item is public forum. We've had people sign for that. We have three minutes if you can speak. We just ask that you be respectful. I've got a timer up here. When there's thirty seconds left, I'll raise my hand. So if you need to finish your thought or whatever, you can get back. We'll just go down the list here, whoever signed in first. So Sue Atkinson, if you'd like to go.
I wanted to continue the thoughts that I started with last month's meeting when I was trying to demonstrate how it's possible to select reading materials that can help with curriculum. But the way I wanted to go about it this week is tell you, I teach for the University of Maryland. They've spent the last seven years getting up to international standards, which are even higher than our national standards. And this spring, they created a new department at the university to support students, basically, and teachers to some degree also to help the students. And what I emailed to you today were three examples of how we're going about it. The first one gives you, in the attachment, provides an overview of the training that teachers will be getting. Because the focus is on the fact that each of us as individuals have a different set of life experiences, different backgrounds, different contexts, and things like that. So we relate to concepts differently. The same is obviously true at the K twelve level. As you occasionally hear from parents saying, well, what you're doing here, you know, that isn't what we're doing over here. It's different interreligion. And so that's part of the training for the teachers now to understand that. One of the other things that is an attachment in there, it's for the students to explain how the department will provide additional support for students with these wide range of activities because they want them to be as successful as possible and be able to develop these skills using these concepts. And the very last example that I included on that happened to be the discussion of a book, which provides just an example of different family experiences. Because when you explain concepts, we're each probably going to relate to it differently. And Rob, I don't remember how many high school math teachers that, but it's been two or three, and she was female. But she was invited to go up to Marshall Downton, the Orient Energy Training that an electrical engineer was providing for. Some lineman up there, it happened to be true, but that can put people off depending on how you have it at school. So the way he started the class was to have everybody introduce themselves and just name an area of interest, a hobby or something. And he immediately helped them relate it to the concepts they would be covered from trade for their work. And the teacher caught on to that. And that is the gist of what all of this new department is going to do. And it would be helpful with what you're trying to do with other programs here to help you students relate to the concepts that you are trying to teach. So the details are actually in the meeting that I sent to you. You, me, didn't I?
Yes, you did. Sad practice.
Well, let me know if you can. Baxter, thirty four. Teach for making the time listen today. I've got now the issues, the challenges, emails, phone calls, the letters asking to go over them. Go to the community to support somebody, someone. Go a certain way. Firstly, I'd like to say why I speak here. Speaking kind of someone that was at Aggiott majority that I know that happened here. It's a song called Seal. Secondly, I'd like to say that I know most of you on some personal level. That we brought passion, counsel, the basketball. Corey, you know my dad. Well, mommy's by the parrot. Him go to the same church. Dawn, I guess we just don't hold the same prayer. I point to stop only to hope that what I have to say has some level of preference. I believe in each other, that's all. Imagine you already have a good sense of the timeline. So I won't say what are the. But I look, let's say, are a few key points in question. And I'm sorry, me or anyone else spoke to the latter today. Yes, I went over there for permission on Pam, but no, I will not hold going to the I. As for everyone else, they already had ladder set up, added curtains off, flashlights, gloves, already going to the I. They also, I was also told that they had to there up there the prior Friday. I'm simply, they would have gone up there regardless of what the plans are there now. Seeing them just throw around a boss computer in the spots that we got there. Pam also said, get down most of the time because a lot of traffic was on the way. Secondly, Bill Hanson and Pam both stood there, did the same exact thing to the engineer. That's why did Bill get to come back towards the anniversary today fighting for the bill? Did Bill ever get written up a matter of responsibility? Quickly, how long was this investigation to determine what happened? But scam up formation. A complete month and a half and too long, seeing that my statements are best, but the past forms submitted before three o'clock on Thursday, from fifth doesn't have to fall after thought, and Pam was fired on May twenty fifth at eight a.m. How many meetings happened between writing something? So I asked you to please think deeply with yourself to find the right answer. This is a dozen years ago, this is someone's life and career, a beauty supporter. And was that a precedent on how that's like this sort of handled in the future? Please take your time, get my code, call, see if you check your numbers, and ask yourself if you think this is the right decision. Pam Rouse, you know love. You know love deserves this. You expect the end of this trouble from teachers. You truly feel your way to heart, thank you. If you have any doubt at all, then I believe you already know the right answers. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, next is Christine Arubi.
Good evening. I just have a few questions, but I'm trying to make sense of this termination request being proposed. According to the latest handbook online dated twenty eighteen nineteen, the student handbook, under student behavior, that section, it seems that at least number seven, eight, eleven, and twelve were violated in this incident. How were the students who were involved climbing into the ceiling before Pam even arrived in the building reprimanded for the violations? Was it the school administration due to intervene? Who truly is responsible for the discipline of the classrooms? And help me to understand where the custodian is responsible for student behavior. At graduation, Mr. Lifter spoke about the ten thousand people that crossed the person's path. I really enjoyed that. And it made me think a lot of all the people that come into our lives on a daily basis. And Pam is definitely one of those in my ten thousand. She is the epitome of following the golden rule, going above and beyond, and putting the school and students before herself. So I believe she really deserves the time to have herself heard. And all the facts can be gathered before a decision is made. Thank you.
Kristy Arubi.
I have to say in power, I am incredibly proud to see this meeting happen and support Pam and support our school. I wish every school board meeting, there were this many people here. Because this situation is no different than the situations we talked about throughout review. Every one of these situations comes down to leadership in the school. And doing what's right for our kids in this community. Pam showed up. She stepped up to the plate when lots of people knew what was going on. She went above and beyond to ask students to get down. And she responded to the call. I asked back in March, who's really guiding the disciplines of this school? And it's relevant today. Are we looking at twenty five years of a person's career, their dedication to this community, and then they're going to step up to the plate every single time and go above and beyond like I saw at the Christmas party? Or are we going to go by the guidance of someone that may not be in this room? And think that we're protecting our product and see why they're in our thoughts? I don't think that's what this community stands for. I don't think that's what our shirt says when we write Baxter Strong and show up. That's not what we do at Baxter. And I truly encourage the school to look deep in their hearts. Listen what that said. I can't add anything more back besides asking you to step up a little bit. Thank you.
Tom Nahtens.
We don't have any conservatives. I just, I'm complex. I work for that. And I've, as I said in my letter to the board, I've got a lot of better jobs. To give her some, I mean, that is twenty five years experience. Has been through two, two remodels, one high school rebuilt. Knows the building anytime now. I think it'd be cool to give her something like that.
Nancy Bligh.
I don't want to say that most people haven't heard, except of course, I do think it's important to acknowledge you guys and say that you guys all still do a fabulous job. We wouldn't be on the top twenty five list in a tiny little school. I work in Des Moines every day. I see major schools struggling with things that we excel at. So that is a blessing. If you have a great work, great leadership, I feel they do a good job. But I think Pam is a huge part of that. And as president of Fun Days and involved in so many communities, that is the person I call first. Have access to the school, to figure out what I can do with the school for all of these things. And so to negate it, that is a disappointment. All of what you guys do, it's all important. We're all important. We're all here because it's important. So I feel like that's all I have to say. I think it would be a huge loss to lose Pam and any of you. So.
For training.
Everybody knows the problem. Don't rubber candy. I believe we're in agreement with all those who spoke tonight on Pam's character, dedication, and facts.
No.
As you may know, Pam is my supervisor, who we affectionately call her Boss Girl. Like in attempts to carry compassion, dedication, communication through her staff, teachers, and administration. As facilities manager, Pam and the entire custodian staff were in charge of all aspects of our school building, grounds, recreational complexes. We are caretakers, they have the responsibility for the student funding and upkeep of these fine facilities. Nowhere is it stated that we are responsible for the control of kids in a classroom. Nowhere does it say that you step in and take control of the classroom when a teacher is in it. We are not to step in and tell a teacher how to control the classroom. Teachers are responsible for teaching, safety, welfare of the students while in their care in the classroom. I truly believe if you scrutinize the facts, you can only come to one conclusion. There is no basis to hold Pam Rouse accountable for the events in the classroom on April. I can only surmise that the recommendation for termination is done on the third part, legal counsel, opinion based solely upon statements given to them. The administration decided to act on this recommendation. I think we should all split it what is right and makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, that finishes our list for the public forum. So we'll move into business assignments and principals' reports. Rob, would you like to go first?
Absolutely, I would know. We have a lot on the agenda. I will just want to celebrate some kids and some activities over the last three or four weeks. First of all, Ms. Carter and our band, Ms. Lanigan and Mr. Archer, put on three fine arts concerts in the last month. The last two, the last was a fine art night, really involved our art kids who were here. If you weren't here, it was pretty impressive walking into the small gym, seeing all kids K twelve. So I just want to recognize those teachers for doing that. This Lanigan went above the concert before that and brought in Warbird Wind Ensemble. It was unbelievably awesome. Our kids, who were trying to build a band program, to be able to play with a college band during the day, get a workshop. Just hats off to all three of them for what they've done through the spring for fine arts. Want to recognize Mr. D, Middle School Student Council. It's been three years since we've done a middle school spring fling with COVID. And we did that this week. It was awesome, taking our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders off site, bowling, doing some activities. So that's always great to get out of the building, build relationships. Our track was awesome this year. Our boys won the conference track meet. Our girls finished third. We'll be running a state track starting tomorrow through Saturday. Ellie Tune, Mandy Seelover, Cody Damick, Cody Sampson, Parent Solley, Rory here. Just really great to see us excel at that level and excited for them to run on the Blue Oval. Graduation, hats off to everybody who has a piece of that. I always think when they walk across the stage, that's a community event. I tell the seniors in rehearsal, it is about you, but this is really about Baxter schools and Baxter community. We always treat that as a really formal event. I unofficially, I talked to Colette. What's amazing, I had some people talk to me about the scholarships. And I've given some scholarships to other districts. And I said this at my speech, what we have here is special. I was at four other small schools in the last month giving scholarships from another organization. You can feel the culture when we come in here. You can feel what our kids are about. Just proud of them. So we give our scholarships at graduation. I think Colette said over forty or forty-five thousand from your side. Trabs and I did some numbers of other outside. I think our kids walked across that state with over eighty thousand dollars in scholarships. So hats off to our kids for going to find those, for dollars for scholars, for Mr. D, all of that. And I will just finish with, I'm supposed to get approved the cheer squad overnight because our girls spend the night, and I have to be board approved on August sixteenth and seventeenth. They do a cheer camp outside, but they do spend the night. So I think that has to be Julie's school board approved. And you could probably, we also have that Switzerland Venice trip for twenty twenty-four that our kids will be taking. That needs to be approved. I don't know if you just want to lump them all together, but those two need to prove. So thanks to Cassie Applegate for organizing that European trip. So that's what I've got.
We have a motion to approve the football cheer squad overnight for August sixteenth. Is that okay? I have a motion, do we have a second? On favor high, both same side. Overnight trip for the cheer squad approved. Then for the Venice trip, Applegate rumble, do we have a motion to approve that? We have a second on favor high, both same side. Motion to approve that trip. Hey, Mr. A.
I'll keep mine short as well. Kind of on the focus of finishing strong here with everything that's going on in our elementary school. You know, wrapping up the year, just a quick touch on some data. Things are just wrapped up our fast testing for the spring. And I feel really great about the data that we're seeing that way. You know, that goal, eighty percent, and continue to work with the kids that are growing there. We're at that goal, and so I feel really strong about that. The year in the classrooms right now, wrapping up, there's so much going on, so many activities, so many learning opportunities. Just walk in the halls. There's energy, there's energy, obviously, because we're getting close to the end. But there's, the teachers and the students are doing a really great job of finishing the school year strong and getting ready to send students on to their next grade levels. We do have summer school letters out. We're having a summer school again this year. So we sent out to those students that wanted to invite to that. So that list is growing every day. We're responding back on that. Lots of field trips. Today was field, track and field day. I think probably, the only thing, I immediately came back and sent a letter out. RPE teachers did an amazing job with that. It was, there was a lot of energy. It was inclusive. Kids were competing in all different kinds of things that they could find enjoyment in and excel in. So it was just really well run, our secondary, middle school kids, most of middle school kids, a lot of eighth graders. They ran the events. They were phenomenal, cheering kids on, getting them involved in different things. So it was just a great day out there. There were a ton of parents out there. So it just was awesome to see people, you know, cheering on their kids and kids cheering each other on, doing those types of things. So there's a lot happening here. I will say today, Rob mentioned state track. As one of the track coaches, I'm very proud of our athletes. And I was proud of our school today. We did a walk in the building. Everybody came out, there were signs and cheering. It's just great that, it's great and everything, like the graduation when the seniors take the last walk around the halls, right? Those are, those are the things that are young kids in our building. That's another thing that makes us unique. Our young kids in the building get to experience great things that older kids are doing so that they too want to do those great things. And so, so it's just been really, really a good end to our school year. And, you know, we have a few days left and we're going to keep pushing. But yeah, it's going to get you some.
Thank you. The next item on our business agenda is personnel. This time, do we will need to close session. Board administration will return to their boardroom. Once we're done with that, we will come back into the open session. We go into closed session. We have a second on favor high. Close session. Okay, we met in closed session. Heard from both sides, reviewed the evidence. In this case, the termination was recommended by council to protect future potential liability to the district. Proper procedures were followed by the district administration. Upon review of the evidence supplied to the board, we find that the reference incident does not rise to the level of termination. However, based on the board's concern, we will work with the administration to develop and implement a performance improvement plan for this employee. Employee may return to job duties May twenty-third. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call both, please.
Cory Robinson?
Yes.
Debbie Meyer?
Yes.
Colette from Colville?
Kim Ticky?
Yes.
John Morgan?
Yes. Okay. Move on to other personnel issues.
Could be the other way.
Right, and then we would share the HR position for that before. Yeah, so both districts would get, which is sad, but we have talked about this after board, and we should very briefly talk about it. So that's why we don't have that. We don't have time to change themselves because it can never happen. So I don't think.
That's what we have to share.
I did have a question on that, that maintenance director. Do we have some that can do that?
Yeah, so we're still gonna do it. I talked to Colin Maxwell, and they knew about our situation. And right now, we have, doing it. So it's still like the position is to share with us. But maybe they're over there.
So she's gonna continue? So I just wanted to make sure that she was actually in. Okay.
Okay, so the twenty-eight year agreements are Collins Maxwell, for the library. Collins Maxwell, maintenance director. Collins Maxwell, technology director. David for transportation director. Collette English, librarian director. Collette English, librarian assistant. Collette English, librarian, sitting in the row. Board members, any questions? Motion to approve those twenty-eight year agreements for the upcoming year. We have a second?
Second.
All favor eye. Both same side. We open up some, we open one bid. Century FS, which I think we've been happy with their service. But.
Price increases.
Yeah.
Subvention?
Right. I'd rather play the discounted price though than like retail.
And actually, those are firm bids for the whole year, right?
Yeah, they're off the DOT.
Any discussion on those?
No, even if, even if, still have a thing.
Right, but I just meant they're not, not maintaining anything.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the gas diesel bids from New Century FS from the July first, twenty twenty-two, June third, twenty twenty-three year. Motion to have a second? All favor eye. Both same side. Gas diesel bids approved for New Century FS. Bread and milk bids, the bread bid.
So she recommends one with pan of gold.
Except who we have first, right?
Yeah.
Looks like a bid, it's just a little bit cheaper than the other bid for what we've projected. Seen taste notes, have people service it look like. Any questions from the board on that? We have a motion to approve pan of gold, pan of gold. For our sprint for the upcoming year. Motion to have a second?
Second.
All favor eye. Pan of gold's approved for the upcoming year. Next is our milk bin. And basically two bids. They did prices from our governors. One bid was from Highland Bitters, one bid was from AB.
Yeah, and for the most part, AB was the low bid. There was maybe a couple of things that were pretty competitive with. But what we, do you remember last year when we chose to go with the escalator, thinking that we'd get a little bit of a break? It's Taser's recommendation to go with a firm bid this year since the market's just so volatile right now. So, and AB is the only one that would do that for us. Highland wouldn't even offer us a firm.
And I think we've been happy with the AB product.
We did go a heavy once.
Long time ago. I don't think that was actually. Okay, any board discussion on that? Motion to approve AB as our milk supplier for the upcoming year. Motion, we have a second? All favor eye. Both same side. Milk bids approved for the AB dairy. Okay, open enrollment applications. We have several of those. I can start out Jessica Iverson for her dog Nora. It's kindergarten, will be kindergarten to Baxter from the distance. Another from Olivia Monta for her children, Holden, Ninth, Camden, Eighth, Ellen, Fifth, and Mo, Third, to attend Baxter for native after Eastfield, California. Jennifer Cannon for her son Trey to attend Baxter. Went to Sarah Hillsdale.
So those are out. John, you want to separate those? So the first ones you just read were in?
Those are in.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The bottom two are out.
Yep, okay. Now, we'll do the ins first. Any board discussion, questions on those? This one you have, Michael, in or out?
Make sure it's those out.
Okay, so all, okay. All right. We have a motion to approve the open enrollment in applications. That's presented. Motion, we have a second? All favor eye. Both same side. Enrollment in applications approved as presented. Michael, if you want to be the help?
So, um, Kristen and Sarah took their daughter, Joely?
Joelle.
Joelle, and they are just temporarily living in Baxter, and they're building a house, and the mom teaches in under it, and their house is gonna be done in the summer. So it makes sense to let them go. And then this Heidi, I would say, the parents are Dana, Jac Harper, for her daughter Heidi, who's gonna be in ninth grade, and they just want a house in Baxter. But both Dana and her husband are new grads. They both just got teaching jobs at, so they want to take her with them. So I think it makes sense. So I think they're just, so. I did reach out to her and spoke to her how little Baxter is, but she, she's like, that's great, but they're teaching, or they're giving teaching back, very amusing, so that's why. I, I tried, and the other ones, I, I'm not sure, but I believe that she's very cool. I think so. Yeah, and so we did their, I think they're just temporarily living. They said temporarily in Baxter. Yeah, at least they were super honest about it. So it was great.
Any more questions on those two enrollment applications? We have a motion to approve those as presented. Motion, we have a second? All favor eye. Both same side. Open enrollment out applications approved. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that Heidi was on there yet. She was six and two, so, yeah.
Hey, ground facilities, transportation. We have much, I think the, I guess Rob's not here, but I think. Building out the red complex.
All of the.
Crow's National Press Box or whatever. I think that got done as far as I know.
Yeah. I was at the baseball conference, I was witness, I went into that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, super penitentiary for?
At the time, I know that Rob's talked about this summer, we're still really working hard to find an Ag teacher. And we have some potential backup players now, so if we can't find someone, you do have a teacher for your job. But we're still trying to, it's wanting, I mean, I don't, not necessarily young, but just somebody who's wanting a full position. But we do have a retired teacher who's willing to come back and teach full time for a year. So please look out for that plan. We under the two-year agreement with Dr. Anthony Meyer, who's a court official since then. And he's gonna be the trainer for the district and we're saving a pretty significant amount of money. Between what we paid that for the training, or we paid that up last year, seventeen thousand three hundred. And we're gonna pay Dr. Meyer eleven, eleven thousand. So it's a pretty good savings, and he's gonna provide the same types of services, he'll still do sports vehicles for the kids this summer. So we're really excited about that, just to have him on board. And then, we've been doing a lot of, in the year wrapping up, and then trying to get our plans made for our school PD and just how that's gonna work. So just, you know, how is, how are we gonna spend the summer? So I've been working really closely with Dr. Anderson and the CIA, the curriculum instructional assessment team. And we're really looking at how we can take that higher level of schools and implement it and make it. It's on the ground, like how do we actually get it going with our staff? And so we're really excited about that. And Jason has seen this image on it, oh, we have some people coming this summer from Solution Tree. They're the ones who do the PLC institutes. And so we've been able to contract with them to come and do some sessions with our staff. And after they come back in the fall and do some kickoff to get us moving again. So we're really excited about that as well. Otherwise, we just can't make it to the next couple of days, you can see that. Next month, they're at Texas, go with kiddos, take it out at eleven and then we're gonna let the staff pop up after lunch. Celebrate everyone. It's tiring necessarily, but we have people moving on, so we'll celebrate them. And then the staff has Thursday, Friday, workday, snowing day. And then some of the staff will be back on Tuesday. And some of them chose to take the opportunity to go to senior exit interviews. And if they sat through both nights senior exit interviews, we traded up that time. So if they wanted to do that, they could then be done next Friday. And if not, then it will have some come back next Tuesday to finish up the process. Yeah. It was, it seemed like a good, a good flexible fit for people. And it was wonderful to see people at seniors interviews, I mean, the kids too. And it was nice to have our staff see that. It was great, some of them just coming away for their Friday, but some of them came with, made a survey and made a really touch.
They probably learned a lot.
Yeah.
There, I think, I mean, I just. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion, we have a second? All favor eye.